Good evening. It is 6:02, so I want to get started since we're already a couple of minutes into this. On behalf of the Ankeny Chamber Area Chamber of Commerce and the Ankeny Area Chamber Government Relations Committee, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Ankeny Community School District Board Election Forum. So joining us tonight are all of our candidates, and I'm going to list them in order that they will be starting their opening comments here in a minute, so one through nine. And I'm going to try my best on all of the names that I just asked about, so we'll see how good my memory is here. So we have Katie Klaus, who is the incumbent. Excuse me. Stephanie Judd is the incumbent. I'm jumping around, I'm sorry, guys. Katie Klaus, Amber Sommerfeld, Coralyn Truitt, Amy Tellier-Arimi, Stephanie Judd, the incumbent, Blanca DeRera, and I didn't do that one very well, I'm sorry. Blanca, Ryan Wallen, Deshira O'Hannon, and Annie Barrows. So please give them a warm welcome and take a bow. My name is Andrea Woodard. I'm Senior Vice President of Government Relations and Public Policy at the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and I'll be moderating this evening's forum. We carry the following format for the next hour and a half. Opening remarks will be given by each candidate. They'll have a minute and a half each, and they'll have some signs going up in the front to try to keep us on task. The next, we will open it up. I have a couple of questions that we will be asking each of the candidates, so we'll start and continue going down the line for all of them, so they all get a chance to answer each of the questions. And if we have a chance, we'll try to open it up to the audience, but with nine members, it might be a little tough. Lastly, we will add a follow-up with closing remarks. They'll each have two minutes to wrap up at the end. We've compiled, excuse me, I want to make sure I get this all right. So we have compiled position statements which were distributed already to help familiarize you with each of the candidates. If you wish to submit a question to the candidates, please write it on one of the note cards provided, I believe they're in the back, and get it to one of the volunteers. We've got Doug in the back who will help grab those from you. We want to submit questions covering as broad of a range as possible, but as I said, due to the number of candidates, we may not get to all of the questions. I'm sure that many of them will stick around after and be willing to have conversations and answer any questions you may have following the forum. So we randomly drew for the order that we listed them in, and just to get us started and moving, I'm going to pass the mic. We're going to pass it each one by one, and then I'll grab it at the end after each portion. So let's start with opening remarks. You each have a minute and a half. And with that, Katie.
My name is Katie Klaus, and I sit in front of you tonight as a career educator. I've worked in many capacities as a classroom teacher, as an instructional coach, and now as a district office administrator, as a director of teaching and learning for Valley Schools. In this role, I present to my school board on a monthly basis. It's through this experience that I've come to truly understand the role of the school board. Charting a district vision through goal setting, monitoring the financial health of the district, setting policy, providing transparency and communication with the public, and most importantly, keeping the focus of the district's work on student learning. This experience coupled with my desire to engage in public service on behalf of my three children and your children, likely to run for school board. I care deeply about the rapid growth of our community and the approach that Ankeny Schools takes to address it. I believe that happens with a lens on two things: access and equity. The demographics of this community are becoming both economically and culturally diverse, and the Ankeny School Board needs to be proactive in preparing for these changes, from time plans to things like its allocations of resources. But that's not the only kind of diversity our schools face. You see, I'm the parent of three distinctly different boys. My oldest is identified as gifted, but couldn't stay organized if it killed him. My middle child has two special education goals, has an incredibly great sense of humor that adults love, and organization skills that most adults would die for. And my third has a vast love of learning to read and do math, but is likely to drive his first-grade teacher nuts. I hope over the next 90 minutes that I can convey, I'm an experienced educator, passionate mother, and committed community member who's advocating for each child.
This will be my awkward way of telling you your time's up.
She's very torn, you know, like, oh!
Yeah, and now we can see the design of it again. Thank you, Katie.
I'm Amber Sommerfeld, and I'm a 20-year resident of Ankeny, originally from Hoxton, Iowa, so I'm too far up the road. My husband and I have helped continue to grow the company, a prayer tool company, and I have the pleasure and honor of being a stay-at-home mother for our three kids. I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary school. And I feel like I've had a chance to be able to mother my family and the family that has been around me, and I feel like I can bring those skills into the public system. I am a wonderful listener. I'm a great disorder. I have eagle-eye vision. I love to listen to what people have to say. I love to listen to their problems and their issues and find the truth. And that's really, a really, that's really what is resonating inside of me, is listening to find the truth, finding what, at the core value that our kids need, because ultimately we are all here because we care about our own kids and the kids in this system. And we want to do what's best for each individual student, but what we want is to create world changers. We want them to have that dream inside of them so that they can go out and do what it is that they are called to do. And that is part of why I'm running. I'm also running because I've had the chance of taking my, one of my youngest out into the, into the private sector. We were having struggles, and we, I know what it's like to have a kid struggling in the system, and I had the choice to take him out, and now we're back. And we're unified in Ankeny, and I want to bring that back to Ankeny.
Well, thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum, and thanks to each and every one of you who came out tonight, because you're intentional about learning about us as candidates, and so we really appreciate that, so you can make your own decisions. So let me tell you a little bit about myself, since that's what you want to know. Who is Coralyn Truitt? I am a pharmacist and a former professor who just has this crazy desire to learn, a real desire to be better, and a passion for education. So when an opening for Ankeny School Board came, when I learned about it, I realized that that's the perfect mix of my skill set as a leader and my passion for education. I'm a positive voice in this community, engaged with my church, youth activities, including coaching, and also some nonprofit organizations. I feel like the Ankeny Community School District has very strong roots and solid leadership that I want to help bring forward in a ethically responsible way. I want to be a leader who will listen and a collaborator that will build strong partnerships so that we can grow, grow intentionally. But most of all, I'm proud. I'm proud to live in Ankeny. I'm proud to be part of this community school district. I was a proud mom of the Hawk golf team, and now a proud mom of a Jaguar, as a homeroom mom from kindergarten to fifth grade now. So I have the luxury of being both a Hawk and a Jaguar, so I have 20 years with my kids spanning the Ankeny Community School District. At the Truitt House, I have a saying, it's "Be true to you." So we say, "Believe, be kind, be better, be true to you." So the school board, so school board motto is "Be true to your school."
Good evening, everyone. I also want to thank the chamber for having us and hosting this forum, allowing us to connect one-on-one, or group setting and possibly one-on-one with the community. My name is Amy Tellier-Arimi, and I'm honored to be running for the school district, school board. My family has lived in Ankeny for 11 years. My husband, John, my daughter, Erica, she is a seventh grader at Parkview, and she thought my opening statement should just be, "Awesome starts with A, Amy starts with A," enough. But I thought maybe I should go a little deeper. Education has been a priority in all my life from having a mother who was a, that I call associates now, she was a teacher's aide, a grandfather and an uncle who served on the school board for the majority of my life. I was on the Terrace PTO. I worked at Terrace as a special education associate. I still serve there, so I've seen it from all sides. I currently work at a nonprofit that provides free sports to elementary-age kids, so I see how there are things that supplement in education, that we need to make sure we're, we have those as well, so we have well-rounded kids. And being a effective board member requires openness and collaboration, and getting outside the box to make sure we're doing the best with the resources we have, and so I would be honored if you'd give me that opportunity on November 5th to work with the education community in Ankeny. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Judd. I've lived in Ankeny for 29 years. I graduated from Ankeny High School in 2000. I'm married to Ben, and we have a son, Zachary, who is 17, in Intense Centennial High School, and a daughter, Venna, who's 10, in Intense Ashland Ridge Elementary. I'm currently a preschool associate in Johnston. I have served on the Ankeny School Board for eight years. I've been on policy, wellness, and calendar committees for all of those eight years, and various other committees over the time. Being a school board member has been a privilege and a way for me to give back to the community that I care so much about. I am committed to setting high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction. School board members need to focus on student achievement, setting and upholding policies, fiscal responsibility, good work environment for staff, being a voice for the community, and transparency. I look forward to continuing in my role as a school board member for another four years.
Hola buenas noches, gracias por estar aquí. This is part of what I want to show you today. While it feels to be different, so, thank you for having me. My name is Blanca DeRera, and I would like to say thank you for granting me this time to introduce myself. My husband and I have two daughters, and by the way, our oldest is in the U. And that's great. Our daughters, Siani and Shantara, graduate from Ankeny Centennial. Siani now is in Truman, studying education, which is great, and Shantara is in Brown University, studying developmental studies. Both of them have learned so much about, about life because of us, but about education and being great because of the Ankeny Schools. We are really thankful for all the things that the Ankeny Schools have done for us, and that's the reason, one of the main reasons, why I want to be part of this board and help and give back to the community. As I just told you at the very beginning, I'm different, and I would like to represent the people that are different. Our community is growing. A lot of people from different places are coming, and if you come to the library, I work for the library as well, I go for Iowa State University. I was a teacher back in Mexico. I was a professor back in Mexico, so I have been in different positions, like in the one, a teacher, and then an administrative person. So thank you for this opportunity, and I hope I can help that, that school board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Wallen, and my wife and I have lived in Ankeny for nine years, and we're high school sweethearts. We come up on our 15th anniversary, we have a 15th anniversary here in December. We have three kids, our oldest, Gideon, he's eight, and he's a second grader at Ashland Ridge Elementary. We have a middle daughter, three, Ellie, our youngest, Tia's one and a half, and we have one on the way, be here in February, and a third-year-old, all right. My background, I work during the day, I'm a digital marketing account executive for a local agency, and my role is to help clients every day have a clear strategy for achieving their digital results online. So what does that mean? Is I work with companies to develop websites, web design, anything from Google optimizations to social media and website, all of that fun stuff. It's the internet, we do it. And this is why I wanted to be involved. I've been involved in the CIAC committee for the last two years and getting my feet wet in the district. And when I asked if I wanted to step up my volunteer and serve to the community, a couple people said, "What about school boards?" I said, "What about school boards? That sounds hard." But I did a lot of research, been going to school board meetings ever since January of this year, and I feel like I've learned a lot, and I believe that my experience with data analytics, with digital marketing, and communication would be a valuable asset to Ankeny Community School District.
Hello, I'm Deshira O'Hannon, and I also want to thank the chamber for hosting this forum and for all of you all for coming this evening. So I am from Pineville, Arkansas. I've been a data of Ankeny for 10 years, and I have three girls, two in Ankeny School System, they are six, and they're twins, and then I have a four-year-old who is in preschool. So what brings me to this table today is several things, and I'll have to be honest with you, I didn't have a long-held plan to join the school board, but I recently had some challenges and experiences and reached out to a school board member, and I considered how helpful that person was, and all of the, that sign is intimidating, Amber, and all of the things that she helped me to work through with my children regarding school. And I realized that that was something that I not only wanted to offer, I wanted to also be a voice for, for those who are missing in the conversation or aren't as highly considered. This is an opportunity to pull together a pretty awesome team, and we already have a pretty great one, but with our changing community, our leadership should represent that and what is becoming. And so that is the reason that I wanted to serve on the school board and to be a part of the great things that will happen with your children and mine, and to also represent the teachers and the community.
Hi, I'm Annie Barrows, and I have lived in Ankeny a year, but I think that offers a unique perspective. I grew up in West Moine in Iowa State, but then, and I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for over 15 years, but I went and taught away from Iowa, so it offers, I have a different perspective, and I appreciate Ankeny. I chose to come home, I chose to come back to Ankeny and to have my life here. I started a business in Prairie Trail, Prairie Trail, an innovators academy where I teach STEM programs to kids 4 to 14. I'm passionate about getting kids interested in STEM and helping them to become innovative thinkers and use that to help make their communities better. And I want to run for school board because I want to help. I feel like since I've been a teacher for 15 years, I know what teachers are feeling and the side of being a business owner. I offer both of those perspectives, and I just, I want to help. I was on a committee last year of the STEM Pass course, and I learned a lot, and I met a lot of great people, and I want to continue serving Ankeny community.
Okay, so I'm going to read off the first question from down here, so that Amber, who will be our first person to respond, first candidate to respond, will have just a minute for me to walk back. I'll go a little slower than I did on the way down. So the first question that each of you will have an opportunity to answer is a bit of a two-parter. It is, "What is your top priority as a school board member and why, and how do you plan to accomplish that priority?" So what is your top priority as a school board member and why, and how do you plan to accomplish that?
So I think the top priority, it's kind of an overview, but it's communication. It's being open with community members, it's being open with the city council, that we've had a pleasure, I've had a pleasure of meeting a lot of people within the community. So it's just having open communication of what is going on, hearing from people, like we were talking about with boundary changes with heritage, having open communication with the decisions that we're making, the things that are going on. How do I accomplish it? It's kind of all encompassing. I mean, you just, you reach out, you get to know people, you sit down with them, you listen, you hear what's going on, and you make the best decision that is for the district that can go all the way and trickle down into each individual student. So to me, it's communication, it's open ears, it's listening, and it's serving, and it's honoring the people that are serving in different parts of the community. You know, we have people that are passionate and experts in the city and the planning, so making sure that you have time to sit down with those type of people so that you get their expertise, because there's things that we don't know that we don't know, and being able to learn and grow and proceed. There's a lot of things that I don't know that I haven't even known yet, but I'm willing to learn, and those are some of my, I would say, that's my top priority, are my favorite things. You don't know what you don't know, right? Okay, so my top priority is ensure every learner will be ready to achieve success. So in my meetings with different school board members and with the superintendent, looking at the district plan, students need to be ready to advance. Align with the board approved district goals, we need to strengthen efforts in STEM and work-based learning activities to increase students' future readiness. One of the particular goals of the district that's really specific is that every student, the percentage of students that will be proficient or higher in reading and math will be 100% by 2024. Is that right? Yeah. And that is a hard goal, 100%. So whether you're a second grader trying to work to pass that class assessment, or you're a 12th grader that is doing coursework to be a plumber, our students must be ready. So according to our district plan, every learner will be prepared to achieve a lifetime of personal success, so this must be the board's top priority, if it's good for the student, it's good for our district.
So picking one is hard, but everything, I guess, for me stems from support. My number one goal is support, and that comes from a couple of different angles. I'll support the teachers, the staff, and students in Ankeny. As a board member, I'll work to establish policies, approve contracts, and that helps attract people to work at all levels of the district. It all starts with the people that are teaching our kids and the people that are taking care of our teachers. I want to focus on bringing more diversity to the district. It is vital that contracts include competitive salary, but also attractive benefits, retirement, insurance, et cetera. I want to reevaluate our approach to hiring special education and general education associates who are a backbone of support in that classroom. I've seen it firsthand. It is vital, and we need to get those positions filled and take care of those individuals. And I want to make sure kids are supported. Every kid, every level, every learning level, every, hold on, is my place here, age, every ability, they need to be supported. We need to have comprehensive programs and services that promote well-being, physical and mental, of all students. So my role I want to take on is to support on different levels, coming from different sides and different areas. Thank you.
Well, I cannot pick just one, I'm going to talk super fast. Ensuring that every student has the opportunities and tools necessary to succeed at their highest possible level, preparing them for a lifetime of personal success. Every decision that I have made over the last eight years has been with students and their education as my top priority. Orbis has been an amazing creative teaching and learning opportunity that is preparing our students for real-life success. I will continue to vote for these types and other initiatives to ensure our students' success. Number two, continuing to lower our tax rate while staying within budget, or at least keep it the same. Over the last eight years, while I've served on the school board, we have lowered taxes every year. We continue to strive for the greatest education possible for a growing district while dealing with inadequate funding. The Ankeny before and after school program was originally my idea, with the help of, really, Mike, but every other board member. We generated millions of dollars so that we can use for technology, so now we have funds freed up. We need this outside-of-the-box thinking. Number three, giving stakeholders and the public access to appropriate and accurate information regarding finance, operations, and results. Communication is so important between all parties involved. We need to work together to ensure our students succeed, staff has the training and resources they need, and parents and community members understand that the what and the why behind our decisions.
Told you I talked fast.
Well, it is true, as they have said, it is difficult to choose, but if I have to choose one, I would choose inclusiveness. And the reason is because of the diversity that we are living in our community lately. It is difficult to understand the way another person learns if I don't know where they come from. So we have lived, as a family, we have lived this process, we have lived in different places, and each place that we have lived, it has been a different way to learn, way to adapt and be flexible. So I think it would be important for the community to include the different communities that are arriving, the different cultures, I'm sorry, but at the same time, it's important that the, that the people that are already here learn about them, what do they do in their countries, how do they do it, and why, why are they here? And once you learn about somebody else, it's easier to help them, it's easier to make them part of the, of the community. We need to recognize the differences, and not just to, not just to recognize the difference, but work with them as a group, as a team, including teachers, and people that help with the teachers, and the parents, and the students itself. Thank you.
That was too fast. All right. My top priority is to prioritize transparency to increase trust. What does that mean? Well, as we move into a new decade, 2020, get ready for the vision jokes, we are going to be making more decisions as a growing district. How are we going to be making those decisions? One word: data. If we are going, we have a data hub that the school is building right now, we just had this presented to us at the last CIAC meeting, and the person that's building it is doing an amazing job. But I ask one question, I work with programmers every single day, I ask one question, who's building the reports? There's one person building the reports. Have you ever heard of anybody, any programmer that develops by themselves? The answer is no, because everybody's fallible, everybody makes mistakes. We need to have transparency in the data that we're using to make decisions, so that there's no fallibility because of human error. We need to have partner, we need to have partner programming, partner reporting, we need people that have checks and balances as we make decisions, because you're right, it is getting more diverse. But data doesn't know diversity, data knows numbers. And so we need to increase the transparency between the data, but we also need to increase the relational equity between the community, the school board, and then the city, so that when we make informed decisions based on data, we're not neglecting the actual people.
My top priority is creating an education experience for the students and the teachers, where they not only feel supported and receiving the training and the tools that they need to work with all types of students, regardless of their background, regardless of their mental health challenges. I have talked to several teachers and several people in the classrooms who are feeling overwhelmed by not only the curriculum and some of the standards that they are responsible for, but also for the different environments that the kids are coming out of that they're, they're expected to speak to, and they don't have the tools or the training for those things. So I would increase the, the training and the opportunities for them to learn different resources and ways to connect with these students, and also to diversify the leadership again. And I think that we can, if we're not finding the teachers that we need here to reflect our community, then we can go out to where those teachers are and locate those things.
Finding top priority involves STEM, but not necessarily STEM as content, but as a way of teaching, get more hands-on and problem-based learning, and expand that. That's where I see kids really get interested in what they're learning and passionate about it, and that's what makes kids achieve and carry that with them. So I think by working with teachers and encouraging teachers to take risks in their teaching and try new things is going to help the students get to be those invaders and really get their minds into STEM and helping and learning that way.
Okay, last one to answer the question.
My top priority is really that the district does all that it can to achieve its mission, and that is making sure that every child in this system is prepared for a lifetime of personal success. From a board perspective, I think that means making sure that there's a range of programs available to students, as many of these people sitting beside me have alluded to tonight. Children are coming with different needs, different backgrounds, different experiences, and that becomes an increasing challenge for the educators in the classroom. And I think it's our job to make sure there are resources available to educators, resources available to students, whether that's academic, social, emotional, mental health, whatever that looks like. And I also think we need to provide training for educators in order to meet those needs of students. And so really, it's making sure that all the resources that we have available to us at the board table are going towards preparing those kids for whatever happens to them once they leave our doors.
Thank you. So our next prepared question, before we open it up to audience questions, we'll start with Coralyn, and that question is, "Describe the current relationship between the city and school, and if the relationship needs improvement, how would you go about doing this?"
Okay, a good question from the chamber. Who answered the question first? First is hard, isn't it, Amber? Yes. Okay, so the relationship of the, the city and the school. My first question, when I met with every person on the school board, on the city council that works for the city or that works for the school, was this, "Tell me about the culture. Tell me about your relationship. Tell me how you work together." So I see a couple nods, that people remember that was my first question that I asked you. So I think that identifying and having some realities about what that looks like, we have to collaborate together. There's not a, that's not a yes or no question, right? So the city and school committee is a vital component to that, having open dialogue in that, and being Having open dialogue in that and being real with each other, having frank discussions and making hard decisions is really important to those conversations. So I see a couple city people here. So having those relationships and working together, it's a partnership. Having a better school helps build a better city. Having a really awesome city helps build schools. So really, really, to work together, and it's a partnership that needs to happen.
As with any organizations that want the best for their citizens and for their individuals, there's going to be ideas that differ and ideas that are similar. I think overall, the relationship right now between the two entities is good. I think it can be improved. I know there have been some issues in the past. And again, it all comes from a place of wanting the best for your people. It's just finding that best path to get there. So the open dialogue, the committee, the needs to talk about where things overlap, things they have to work on together. I have one minute more inside. Just continuing that dialogue, working for meeting the needs of every student, regardless of income, regardless of where they live, their address, needs to be a priority. I think that needs to be a priority from both sides. And I think it needs to be a little bit more of a priority than I'd like to see. But I know the relationship is good. I know everyone's heart's in the right place. But just communication, what resources can we pull together to save money for the city, to save money for the school district? How can we coordinate all of that and coordinate all of the information? We're growing at an incredible pace, all that data that was talked about. We need to manage that for city growth, for school growth, so that we're taking advantage of every possible available function and city and school service that is available to us.
We all want what is best for this community. We serve and value the community, whether it's the school or the city. That's all what we all have in our hearts and in our minds, is what's best for the city. So communication and understanding is key. Hard issues will do have came up, and we all just need to try to come to a compromise with what is best for everyone involved, because we are just one city, one school, district, all working together to make a big amazing.
I am really surprised about this question, because it seems to me that they work together all the time. As I told you, I work for the Ankeny Library. We are right by Prairie Ridge Middle School, and we get to visit. The kids get to visit also almost every day, and that's a big adventure. But we work together in that. We help the middle school taking care of these kids. And the police helps the schools, the police helps the library. It seems to me that they are working already together, making an amazing planning where the new schools are going to be, because they are needed in those new areas. When we moved to Iowa, we learned that Ankeny was opening the second high school. And that was amazing. It was such a plan before it was really necessary to happen. So I think that the school district and the city are working together, and we can see that. And it's almost invisible, because it's perfect. It's a relation that is really very well constructed. Thank you.
Well, I think the issue is a lot more complicated than it sounds. Everybody, the city needs money, the school needs money. And there probably wasn't a better example than the last school board meeting that was displayed to me. A gentleman named Joshua Porter came up and described how he is in charge of the Ankeny basketball club. So he has almost 300 kids that he schedules over 35 teams across the Ankeny community, where he has to find gyms for them to practice. He can't find gyms for them to practice, because the city runs the school gym schedules. That was really surprising to me. Here, I thought I knew everything, but I did not know that. So that's a challenge for a community member. That's actually managing the children that are in our schools. They're actually having a hard time doing it, because there's a relationship between the city and the school that's not working very well in that capacity. I'm sure the city and the school work very well in many other ways. But I think, to answer the second part of the question, if there was one thing that I would want to focus on, is to come to an understanding of what is important for the city, what's important for the school, and coming to a compromise that benefits our kids. Because he said he has second graders practicing at 7:30 at night. If you have a second grader like I do, bedtime's at 8:30, no later. And if you're getting home from basketball practice at 8:30, that's not going to happen. And so that was seemingly concerning to me, so that was one issue that I would want to address.
I agree with Ryan and many others on the panel. I think that there are growing pains. Our community is busting at the seams in some regards, and that's a good and a bad thing, only because we have to figure out how to work our way through that in every area, in each category. So as it relates to the schools, like I said, I think it's just a growing pain that we're going to work our way through. But on the other side, I mean, we know that there have been several budget cuts and funding with the schools. And I've seen all kinds of efforts to supplement the funds and still provide and allow the youth to have different resources through the businesses contributing toward the school fundraisers and that sort of thing. So there are lots of positive things. And then there are normal things that we have to work through as new problems come up. And so that's kind of how I feel about this, the question.
Yeah, being towards the end, don't want to repeat too much. But I just want to say that I feel like the schools are the heart of the city, and they should really represent the city when they're away. That's what the students are. The city should be serving the students, and the schools should be serving, the students should be serving their city of Ankeny. So I just feel like they should work together very closely and both represent each other.
Okay, two more candidates for this question.
So I think many partnerships are most successful when we focus on our community as a whole. And the goal is to better the product, which is our community. And so each of those, the city and the schools are approaching that in the best interest of their organization, and ultimately, it's to help our community as a whole. I think that the relationship can always be improved, and I think strong relationships are founded on, as Corlin alluded to, a culture of collaboration. I think transparency and frequent communication is an important part of that. And I think we're just better when we can think about what we have more in common and less about where we're different. And so in terms of being a board member and contributing to that partnership, I think it's seeking to understand first, because this is an area which I don't have a lot of expertise, and kind of understand what that relationship is like, and then just really moving forward in a way that's positive for our community.
I would resonate with most everyone here. And one of the words that I've been writing as well was seeking to understand. So being able to sit down in front of someone, whether you're in a council or you're somebody that's a mom of new kids in the system, it's being able to sit down with someone face-to-face and maybe sometimes agree to disagree. We all have different filters, we all have different lenses. But I think knowing what the city has as its role and its heart and its head that it has, that they stay in their lane, and us as a school board, we stay in our lane. But we get across paths. And you have community development, like the AADEC, like the Economic Development Corporation. It's doing life with each other. I totally missed someone. But it's doing life with each other. It's going into the football games and hanging out together. It's having a family. We are, Ankeny is a family. We are a growing town into a city. But being able to have those relationships deeply rooted with each other and just being able to listen to each other and what is going on, what are the problems, what is the root problem? Maybe there's the bad fruit at the top of the tree, but there's a root problem. So being able to communicate with people in each role and just having open communication. You just got to get together and listen.
Thank you. So that wraps up our two prepared questions. I have a couple of questions from the audience. Thank you for your submission of those. And I did forget to mention, there's coffee, lemonade, and cookies in the back. Don't be shy. Or afterward, please, just shy to grab some. So the next question, Amy, you'll kick that one off, and we'll wrap it up with those two questions before closing remarks. So, question is, the district keeps growing by adding hundreds of students each year. What is your plan moving forward to deal with this growth? So Amy, you're up.
Well, yes, the district adds, I believe it was an average of 364 students a year, if I remember correctly, which was easy to remember because there are 65 days in a year. My plan to manage that growth, wow, I am not qualified enough as an individual to come up with a plan to manage that growth. But it builds a little bit off of the last question, which is collaborating with the city, who is also experiencing the same growth, just in different ways, and they are also needing to manage that. So keeping those lines of communication open with the city. We have to make classroom size a priority. We can't manage growth by stuffing more kids in a classroom. So we have to think about the state tax that's going to, that helps build it with physical structures. How are we going to use that money? We're going to have to build more schools. How do we creatively use the schools and the buildings that we have to manage that growth? Taking care of our teachers, to make sure that they're helping to manage that growth. I mean, there's so much that goes into it. But you're going to have to bring everyone to the table. Everyone that has a stake in Ankeny, everyone that has a stake in the growth, has to be part of the conversation. And you all need to work together to make sure that as we continue to grow, because we rock, if people want to come here, that's pretty cool. But we have to make sure we take care of the people that are coming here in the best possible way. So that's just getting everyone together and collaborating and using the resources that we have in front of us.
Yeah, I used to say that it seems like you have 10 kids, but your budget is for five, because we keep growing and we, one, don't get the money fast enough for all those growing students. But we have to continue to build buildings, and we have to continue to hire teachers, and it's all a big collaborative thing. But I think, like I mentioned before, thinking outside of the box of how we use our money. Where do we spend that money wisely? Where does the money come from? Thinking of alternative things, like the Horbus program, that gets kids outside of the school system. We've talked about an alternative high school. That would be thinking outside of the box. So while growth is our biggest challenge, it's also a unique and amazing opportunity for this community to think outside the box, use our resources wisely. But the most important thing is to focus on that each individual student. So as long as we're doing that and we don't lose our kids in the process, I think that Amy's going to be able to rock it.
Yes, this is something that is not just happening in Ankeny or Iowa. It's happening around the world. The population is growing, and we need to be ready for that. I think that Ankeny needs to face that and keep, yes, keep building schools, and that's very easy to say, of course. But the planning that so far has been done is amazing. Yeah, it's not a good idea to have that many students per classroom, because the teachers have been already overwhelmed. Sometimes, some people have suggested to have volunteers in the classroom to help the teachers and work out the size of the classroom. So it'll be important to, in order to make, to suggest different options, it'll be important to know the budget, which the school board comes with, and how can we work the best way with that budget.
Yes, we need to think outside of the box. As a private citizen in the business sector, as an entrepreneur, I've helped a couple different things off the ground. And, you know, thinking out of the box is definitely something. We need to think about how to utilize technology. How can we get one teacher's knowledge to multiple students at one time without having to hire 10 teachers to do that? I think that's a question that we should ask. But I also think that as a school board member, I know that if we look at the district plan, it's well into the 2030s. And so they're thinking about that already, which is amazing. So as a school board member, I believe it's my job to help the district think strategically about what best to do next. And I also think as a private citizen, I can help communicate and engage with the people in the local government, like the city, like the state government, to inform them of what's happening in our community. They can't help us if they don't know. There's a lot of people that should have been here tonight. I would venture a guess, they just didn't know about it. So we need to get information out to the community by way of using technology like social media, by taking the school board members and saying, hey, let's all post this on social media, so people know what's happening. And let's get down to the state office, so that our government knows what's going on in our district. I think that information can help breed innovation, and that's what I want to do.
I agree with the person who mentioned that there are a lot of perspectives and people who have experience that we can lean on to help direct how we handle the growth. But this is also not a new thing. As Blanca said, other communities and districts have experienced some of the growth. It's probably nowhere for Ankeny. So we don't have to necessarily be on the wheel. Look at the data. Determine what actually worked and what we want to pull into our community, and then structure that around what works for Ankeny.
I think something to keep in mind, again, as I already said, with class sizes. As we expand, we, right now, I've been subbing in the district in all buildings and all ages. And I was startled by first-grade class, where there was 27 first graders in me. And I have 15 years' experience, and it was hard. And so I think we cannot, we need to lower the class sizes. We can't keep adding more kids. I mean, absolutely not. So we need to figure out a way to reallocate the funds and as we build, to build enough classes for these kids, so we don't have to have bigger classes. We can have smaller ones.
All right, three more.
So I think the first step that I need to take as a new school board member is to really fully understand what exists in a current plan to manage growth. What place, what does the long-range plan look like? Whether that is facilities, whether it's hiring, whether it's financial, what are decisions that have been made, what do those projections look like? And really understanding that in far more depth than I do as a community member or as a parent right now. I think we need to be mindful of resource allocation, whether, like I said, whether that's fiscal or hiring. I think it's really important to listen to our community. I am a parent of children who are being moved for the second time in five years. And that is upsetting for parents to, and that comes with a community that experiences growth. I understand that. But we need to be really open and honest and be willing to listen to our community and what they're, what they see as needs as we continue to grow from growth, continue to grow. I also think we can learn from our past experiences. The good news is how we experience this on a frequent basis. And so I think we have an opportunity each and every time, you know, we put up a new building, that we can reflect and learn from that. And I think really, what is the most important thing we can do as board members is make sure that students and their needs and their learning is what drives all of our decision-making when it comes to growth.
I think we have a benefit and the privilege that our board is actually, like I think Ryan had spoken, that we are already projecting towards the future. I think our board has already been implementing things and plans and looking forward thinking and being more preventative than reactive. And I think that's something that will stay of course. I personally don't have an individual plan, because I'm just one voice out of this. But I feel like the board has already done a lot of implementation of forward thinking, future thinking, going ahead of time, and making sure that we are staying ahead of time, which sounds kind of strange, but we can. The class size, I simply have an experience where we have brought our youngest back into Ankeny, into third grade, and as I was registering with him, I called the school, thinking, great, we're going to get him back into Prairie Trail. And I call it, you know, they say there's a process. You have to go through the register and go through online and get him registered, and then we'll let you know. And I was just like, oh, so he might not go to Prairie Trail. She's like, I don't know if we will have room or not. You have to go through this process. Thankfully, I got, he got the very last position, or the very last spot at Prairie Trail, third grade. And there's 27 kids in a class, and he came from 16. And that's a huge number. And not necessarily just the numbers, but I feel like we need to be able to look at the curriculum. And not necessarily just the numbers, but I feel like we need to be able to look at the curriculum, and how that is assessed, and how are we looking at that for 27 kids? Is that working? So looking at curriculum and making sure that we're receiving correctly, and that they're learning at a pace that they, they can. I gotta stop. But I think that's a way that as we plan forward, we look at the curriculum.
I don't know if it's about to be first or last. Okay, so here's the growth question. Growth thrives when our community is unified. We lived through, Carter, our oldest, was in the class of 2011. We watched this community torn apart by two high schools. And a community, a growth is, can be an asset or can be a detriment. And during that time, for all of us that remember that, it was a detriment. It was a really hard thing on a community that always before it really didn't unite it, and had a lot of pride. We must grow with intention. So there has to be an intentionality about it, and that is really a focus of the board currently. We have an intentionality about it, which people have talked about. So I won't expand on that. But there has to be innovation. You have to be creative. There has to be growth with innovation, thinking outside the box, like Stephanie mentioned. And growth requires leadership. So there's strong leadership already in Ankeny School District. It's the board's role to be overarching the policy, the governance. People do their jobs, and they do their jobs really well. So there's strong leadership that is already doing these jobs. Ankeny is looked to by other districts of how we're growing, how should we grow? That's, we're looked to for that. So we need to be that. But these leaders have to make hard decisions, and that's the board's role, is to make those hard decisions. So three Ts, trust, have to have trust. You have to trust at those boundaries. We're done by Democrope, that's really smart, really does a good job. Trust that, trust it, and have faith in the system. Have transparency, be able to communicate and listen, and be a listener to the community, and have transparency. And you have to have teamwork, and you can't be a good team without strategy.
Thank you. So we have one more audience question before we get to closing comments, which were nine times two minutes apiece, that will take about 20 minutes. So our last question for the table, and we'll start with Stephanie on this one, is, it's a little long, so we've got a minute to think through this. Local Ankeny businesses have always been strong supporters of student groups, both activities and educational. However, these requests continue to grow with the growth of the school district. How do you propose balancing the need for funding versus overwhelming, versus overwhelming the business community?
Well, I think one step we've already been doing now is to give back to that community. So not that they're, you know, paying us to give them something, but they give to us, and we give to them, it's a mutual thing. So we're giving our kids back through Orbis again. I think I'm a broken record, Joe. So giving back to our community in that way. Also, I feel like our community will come together, and if there's a need, they will fulfill that. And so maybe, once again, outside of the box, thinking, what do we need? Do we need uniforms here? Does this club need this? And then come together as either PTOs, or come together as parents, just whoever wants to come together and say, you know, this is the money we need. Who can step up? And I would say to businesses, if you can't do it, this community is going to understand. Just say, I can't do it at this time, and it's fine. Because we know that you are a very giving community, and very giving businesses, and we will still shop at your shops, and buy your food, and do things, even if you cannot provide those extra assets for us.
Well, I'm so happy we are talking about these, these extra activities that we have here in Ankeny are amazing. Our daughters were part of cross-country choir choir. All these different activities, and they are just amazing. And it's a great thing, because it's important to, for the students to develop, not just in the knowledge that they get in the classrooms, but outside, and all the relationships that they develop during these activities. So yes, it's important, it's amazing what you have done so far, supporting as parents, supporting those activities. And yes, as Stephanie just said, selling cookies, or, you know, looking for money in different ways. But have we considered the sponsorships from different companies? It would be, I feel, I feel like a lot of companies will be more than happy to sponsor different teams or different groups. And the other thing is, it is, it is really important to keep supporting these groups, and having activities, extra activities, to, to, to raise some money for, for those things, because they, they are part of what identifies Ankeny schools.
Well, I'm gonna echo Stephanie. I've been a part of the Orbis committee for one meeting, one meeting only. But I'm so impressed with, if you don't know what that is, it's the kids that partner with local businesses, juniors and seniors. They go out in the community, and they do these short-term projects that help businesses with, just like a small meet. The one that I heard about was, the kids, kids went to Blue Bean. The owner of Blue Bean wanted to know, like, how do I get a coffee culture for high school? Which I'm like, why are they drinking coffee? But anyway. And they, and they gave an idea to sell, like, grilled, like toast, toast. Like, nobody sells toast. And I just asked, well, that's great that they're going to do that, but how does this entrepreneur measure the results of that effort? Like, what is his profit margin after he started selling toast? And can we get that data, so that we can tell other business owners in the community that our kids are providing revenue-increasing opportunities for other businesses in the community? Oh, and by the way, we have a 2% unemployment rate. Businesses can't find people to work. So again, I'm broken record on information. I think there's a lot of people that just don't know stuff. And so I think if we can get the information out of the community, give the business owners the results of how it is that we are partnering, and thinking out of the box, and, and helping the business community, that we can show that there is actually an ROI on partnership with the schools, because there's some amazing kids out there with awesome ideas, and we can really bring that to the community.
I agree with what Brian just said, but I also want to preface my answer by saying, I don't know what the current, what all the current ways are that they seek fundraising opportunities. I do know that the PTO does a lot of incredible things, and I know that there are a lot of business partnerships with the school. But the kids are our very assets, and some of the most out-of-the-box creative thinkers. Let's get a focus group of those young people, and get some of their ideas on, on things they would want to do to raise money, or different creative ways that we can kind of bridge that gap and meet the needs that they have.
Again, with Orbis, I've worked with them a lot in the past. And I found as a business owner that, I don't know if people know, but like, we can ask and pitch ideas to Orbis students. Like, I need something, can you guys help me? But then there's also the reciprocal way that students pitch their ideas to business owners, like how they can help. So it's super reciprocal. And like, I offered like space to the students, and they came in, and we, they did a design challenge. So the communities always, and businesses are always looking to give back, and it's reciprocal both ways. And then Orbis is, I think, just leading the way in that.
So I agree with what many people here have said. I think we need to challenge ourselves constantly to think outside the box. I think the root cause here is schools don't have adequate funding. And that has happened year after year after year. And that is causing just a shortage of funds all the way around. And so obviously, we are, I mean, that's not a direct tie to why we're going out and, you know, giving stuff from businesses. But that is something that as a school board member, we strongly need to advocate for with our legislature. In terms of our local businesses, as others have said, I think we need to think about is continuing to grow programs that get our kids out in the community, so that our businesses see the return on that. And, you know, that helps keeps kids interested in our local community, and kids graduating and wanting to stay and contribute, and be a part of this great time that we're a part of. And I think we need to, we can continue to grow the ways that we acknowledge the support that local businesses give us, and whatever that communication or acknowledgement looks like. I think there's a lot of opportunity there as well.
I'm in agreement, kind of just being able to get the kids involved in life skills, being able to go out into the community and the businesses, and have, develop relationships. Some, we do have a very affluent community, and we have very, can, can have entitlement type of mentality. And so being able to show these kids how to go out and serve, and then learn something from that, gain life skills, and grow, and take those things out into the world. I feel like that's something that we can really, I don't have, I don't have words for it, but I feel like that's just a rich place for them to, to put their roots into. Something that I also just feel like, I, I'm on the Ankeny Booster Club board, and we're constantly listening to, how do we raise funds? What does it look like? How do we not bombard these businesses again and again and again? By the clubs, by the schools, by the sports. So there's gotta be a way to kind of streamline the boundaries together, so that we're not constantly having somebody coming into each business every week, saying, I want your money. So just learning how to earn that, and have entrepreneurship at a very basic level.
So I'm gonna just do snaps for Orbis, because I think that Orbis is, everyone's really, I'm just gonna sell on that. But I'm gonna just build on the point that Amber just made about really having some distinction. And the board, I think the role of the board can really define the needs, and have some policy in place, so that there isn't someone, you know, oh, guess what, Northeast was just here, you just, you know, we just gave our $1,000. So really, that's one of the roles of the board, to have some policy that gives direction and defines those needs. And the partners should have a say in that. Our business partners should have a say in that. We are so lucky to live in Ankeny, right? We're very lucky to live in Ankeny. Schools are an attraction for our businesses. Our businesses want strong schools. They have a desire to give back. They can attract people to come work for them because of the schools. So we really need to view this as a partnership. So there's longstanding collaborations and partnerships with very strong businesses in this community, and people want to step up. We just need to figure out the best way to collaborate with them, and really help have them, like, you know, so many people mentioned, it needs to be a partnership, it really needs to be a two-way street, that we work together. And most importantly, we need to say thank you. We need to say thank you to those businesses. We need to find ways to show our appreciation. We need to have, find ways for them to be recognized. They need to have that, that thanks from all of us. I'm sorry. All right, well, I also love Orbis. I wish we would become Orbis High School, because I think that structure and that way of learning is amazing. But why don't we do it for Orbis, to make connections in the community? Why can't we take the Orbis philosophy, boil it down, and give the show choir those tools to go out to a business, and work with them on a project? You know, expand Orbis in an informal way. Use that to make shows businesses. Teams, all of that. We can, we can use that same structure and grow it on a bigger scale. I'm just gonna work some ideas here. You could get a pool of businesses, and they could sponsor a school. So these 10 businesses work with this school. They could sponsor a specific group, or a specific activity. You could look at structuring things that way. The, the things that are the good, go back and forth, those cards that they sell. The businesses get more people in, the schools are able to sell those cards for a certain price. So all of those kinds of things that give an advantage to both sides. And anything that would help the kids learn, learning to sell, learning to go out in the community, those are all valuable skills that you don't find in a classroom. So those are just some of my ideas that I ripped off the top of my head.
Okay, so we're going to wrap up with closing comments, and we'll start with Blanca. So the three of you are off the hook with starting a question or anything tonight. But Blanca, you each have two minutes to do closing comments before we wrap up. So take your way.
Well, please invite your friends to read about all of us. It's important that people get to know us, and, and find out who we are. And what, all right, our ideas are, all of us are really great, all of us, in a different way. So please ask them to, to come to the election on November 5th. But a lot of people don't even know what it is. I'm sorry, but I have been finding out that. So it is important that we share, as you said, sharing our social media, share about all this importance that is the school district in our community. And please, I have some notes here. Yes, doesn't matter who you choose, all of us have this big commitment with the community. But remember, it's very important to have a different point of view in the group. So keep that in mind. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for saying all of us are awesome. I just met her tonight, so that was so nice. The, I'm a music director at a church. I have about, you know, anywhere from 15 to 20 volunteers, depending on who wants to quit that month. And so I lead a band, and our Sunday morning service, and I lead a student band. And let me tell you, what gets somebody, as a part of my team, really frustrated, is if I ask them to do something, like sing a song, but I don't give them the resources to learn it. It's really frustrating for them. I've met with, I've met with some parents that are, that are going through some frustrations with the district, and it comes down to, to information. It comes down to the fact that they just didn't know. I've been at all the school board meetings. I knew everything that they were asking about. They could have done the same thing. But who has the time to go, to go to all the school board meetings? Well, I didn't, because I'm trying on the school board. But they don't. And what's been really laying on my heart, as, as I've been talking to people, and this wasn't even something that was on my radar, until I got more involved with the community, is that people need information. The district does a great job of putting all the information on the website, but as somebody who works with websites every single day, it's really hard to find the information. Like, Google wants you to have at least just like three clicks from your most important information. It's like 10 to get to, you know, some of these documents. So what I've committed to the community is that I'm elected to school board. This is the only promise I can make. I can't make any other ones. Bruce has alluded to the lack of power that we have, which is great. But what, the only promise I can make is the fact that I will be transparent with information. So what I've, what I've promised is that I will create my own newsletter on my website that people can sign up for, and every month they'll get an update on what's happening with the school board. And then the information that they need will be provided to them in a way that they can understand and get whenever they want. Oh, and vote for me.
Okay, right. I wanna read something to you real quick, and hopefully it doesn't take up my whole two minutes. But I received a message on Facebook from a teacher, and I just wanted to share it with you. It says, "Hi, I'm a teacher of the district, and I'm interested in learning about your platform. One thing that I'm concerned about in Ankeny School is racial equality and socioeconomic equality. The district is recently hired a director of equality, so we're moving in the right direction, but I feel we are still stuck. Many teachers and community members we link in is white, rich, high-class city with schools full of privileged white kids. That is in fact true, but the culture, at least on the South Side, is changing. Ankeny is becoming more and more diverse, but the needs of these students aren't being met. As a white teacher, I reach out to all students, but my heart is forming relationships with minority students and those who low socioeconomic status. Because I feel they need a voice and representation. It's hard for me to connect with them 100%, because I'm white and I'm not poor. But I let them talk and help them find solutions, which aren't quite happening, to their concerns of race in our building and school system and city. One student is black, told me she can't be herself at school, and has to pretend to be something she's not. That's not okay, and she feels like she doesn't belong." It had a few other points in there. But one thing that I want to encourage you all to do is elect a team that can come together and approach things from all perspectives. And that as we are creating policy, and as we are creating the system and the structure that our education is based on, that we are inclusive of every child, despite their needs, despite their, their mental health abilities or inability, and that we are considerate of those things. And like Blanca, I think that you all should continue learning about all of the candidates, and consider voting for me on November 5th.
One thing I just wanna say, that I don't think anyone's mentioned yet, that I love that we have all of these women running. I think Ankeny's changing, society's changing, that we're gonna get, more women are stepping up and want their voices to be heard. And that's how I feel, and I think that's great, no matter, Ryan.
It's okay.
No matter who gets on, I'm so happy to see all of these women stepping up. And something else I just wanna say is, you know, I'm more concise than a lot of you. I don't like speaking a lot, but I just, I wanna give back. I wanna help, I think, as being a teacher, I, I offer a unique perspective in teaching in other places. being a teacher, I offer a unique perspective in teaching in other places. I just, I just wanna help and so I think that, I think there isn't an educator yet on the board and I hope to be that person.
Ankeny is a community that draws a lot of families because of its reputation for excellent schools. We have much to be proud of when it comes to our system and schools. Our achievement data is excellent, our students and staff work in beautiful buildings, our kids have access to one-to-one technology, our secondary students have a plethora of high school courses that are second to none in the state of Iowa. But we must continue in a relentless pursuit of getting better. We, like many schools across America, still experience achievement gaps for students in poverty, for students who are English language learners, for students with IEDs. Those types of data underscore the absolute priority it is for Ankeny schools to allocate its resources and to provide programming regardless of zip code, of ethnicity, of economic circumstance, that helps our children develop the skills and habits of mind necessary to continue to learn beyond our educational system. Whether that's trade schools, apprenticeships, community colleges, four-year institutions or other opportunities. It is a priority for Ankeny schools to prepare our children for post-secondary opportunities that open up doors for economic security and most importantly, opportunities to contribute positively to our community. I want my own three boys, Brady, Charlie and Jack, to graduate with confidence in themselves and a vision for their future. And I want that for your children too. I'm a passionate, experienced educator who will advocate for your child and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
So one of the reasons that I actually am sitting up here in front of you is because I had a dream and I had a literal dream that there was a school bus with American flag on top of it and I got in it and I drove it. And a few days later, I had a friend who was a teacher speak over me and said, you know what, you should really run for school board, we need more women. But thank you, Ryan, for being here, we need you. And that just, that landed on me and it stuck and that was probably about a year ago. And that's ultimately what each of us are here because we have a dream, we want our kids to be able to dream, we want our kids to be able to cultivate that dream inside of them and not squish that because of what we as a parent decide we want them to do. As a board, we want to be able to help our superintendent dream, we want our principals to be able to dream, we want our teachers to be able to dream and we want our kids to be able to dream. So being able to have that care on every single level, that everyone is cared and cultivated and being improved upon is really what I wanna bring into the board. I want people to be able to dream again, I want them to go to, what I wanted to be when I was a kid was a mom and a teacher. I had a mom who was a teacher and I always wanted to be a teacher. And you know what, she actually deterred me from being a teacher because there were hardships, there were struggles and there were things that were tough for her to work through and she wanted better for me. But this is where I can come and serve and honor you teachers, you families, you superintendents, principals, city council, that we come together as a family, that we can dream together and see what Ankeny can be at its best.
So my opening statement, I talked to you about my three Ps, positive, passion and pride. So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about, that's more of a personality, a person who can integrate and a person who really wants to serve this community and give back. So what's my platform? So you've heard little components of this platform with some of the questions, but my platform is ready, set, go. Ready, ensuring every learner will be ready to achieve success, we got to talk a lot about that with our, my top priority. Set, we haven't really addressed this issue, but setting students up for success with the resources they need. We didn't have much of a discussion tonight about resources. Our absolute most important resource this district has is the people who touch our students every day. The teachers and educators are our most important resource. We must have the very best teachers, we must attract the very best teachers with competitive salaries and benefits and then we have to make them love their jobs. If they love their jobs, they're gonna wanna stay here, they love their jobs, they're gonna wanna come to work every day and work with those students. So we have to keep those students or keep those teachers and educators. Resource allocation is challenging. It requires tenacity, it requires grit, it requires innovation and it requires creativity. So we touched a little bit on that resource allocation. And go. So when I talked to Dr. Kim, so he said, I have a goal of going from good to great. There is a vision, there is a plan. The educators in this school district, it's their occupation, they're really good at their jobs. Education will become my advocacy when I serve on the school board. I wanna help go from good to great. I will be a leader who will listen, I will be a leader who will learn, I will be a leader who will make hard decisions for you. So ready, set, go to the polls, you have to go on November 5th and vote for us and be true to your school.
Okay, before I get into this, I just wanna say that when Annie was talking about all the women running, sorry, Ryan, I looked up and I saw my 7th grade daughter doing the heck yeah and nah and I couldn't barely keep it together. That means the world to me, so thank you everyone that's up here. Thank you for attending, good night, a thank to the chamber again, thank you to all the other candidates, takes a lot to choose to run for office as I'm running and I applaud all of you for stepping up to the challenge. You know, I don't know that you could really go wrong up here. So when I was thinking about running for school board in the beginning, I kept thinking, Ankeny schools are great, there isn't, there's nothing to run about, I'm not mad about anything, I'm not upset, they don't need me, I have a daughter that loves school, there's no issues, it's good. And then I stepped back and I thought, it's not about me, it's not about just one child, it's not about my child. It's, it's wanting every child to love school. And part of that is recognizing that kids are different, they learn different, they have different interests, they learn at different speeds, different levels, they feel different, they look different, on and on and on. And Ankeny needs to be a place that cherishes and embraces those differences and not a place where kids are just cookie cutter. Not everyone goes to college, people wanna go in the military, kids wanna go into plumbing, whatever it is, everything is different and we need to embrace those differences. So, real fast, when you're at the polls, A is for awesome, A is for Amy, tell your Amy, it's the last name that you can't spell and you can't say, but it is one you can count on, November 5th, thank you.
So I'm a hawk, a loving animal and my kids are Jaguars. You will not find a more loving side on both sides of the district than myself. I'm also a preschool teacher, so I deal with the day-to-day life of school myself with four-year-olds. Every decision and vote that I have made over the last eight years has been with students and their education as my top concern and I will continue for the next four years to ensure every student has the opportunity and tools necessary to succeed at their highest level possible, preparing them for a lifetime of personal success. We have tremendous teachers and staff working with our students. I will continue to support professional development that provides educators with training, support and time to work together so they can successfully teach a rigorous curriculum to all students at all levels of learning. I understand the policies, guidelines, needs, challenges and strengths of our district. I am not afraid to vote my conscience, not just the path of least resistance. I will ensure stakeholders and the public have access to appropriate and accurate information regarding finance, operations and results. I want to continue to be a voice for students, staff, parents and community. I look forward to continuing in this role as a board member to ensure that the great education we expect continues for current and future students. I hope that I earned your vote, go Hawks, go Jaguars, thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause.